Government finance profession, furthering standards and policies for the benefit of our communities and our members, and monitoring and reviewing legislative and judicial activities as they relate to our membership. My specific role on the board this year is to fill the position of the National Government Finance Officers Association representative. GFOA was founded in 1906 and represents public financial officials throughout the United States and Canadians. There's approximately 18,000 members from federal, state, and local governments. Tonight I'm here to present three awards that are from the recognition program of GFOA. They are the Popular Financial Reporting Award, the PAFR program, the Distinguished Budget Presentation Award, and the Certificate of Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Program, or the CAFR program. I thought I would present these awards in the order that I feel are the easiest and the hardest to obtain, but Stuart, Ann, and Gina might have a totally different order, but I'll let them tell you that one. So the Popular Financial Reporting Award, or the PAFR, was established in 1991 to encourage and assist state and local governments to extract information from their comprehensive annual financial report to produce high-quality, popular annual financial reports specifically designed to be readily accessible and easily understandable for the general public and those without a background in public finance. Eligible reports are reviewed by four judges who complete an evaluation form comprised of five categories, giving varying weights of importance toward the overall final grade. These categories include reader appeal, understandability, distribution methods, and other, which would be the creativity or something like that. Another score, that's half of the, that's 50% of the score, the other 50% is based upon overall quality and usefulness of the reward, looking back at those four that I mentioned previously, and a score of 75% or higher, the PAFR then has given the award. In Oregon, there are only six recipients of this award, four being cities and two special districts. There are only 48 cities nationwide, so this is a pretty elite company that your finance department is in, and you should be very proud. This is the third consecutive year that the city of Albany has received this award, so congratulations.
Thank you.
The second award is for the city's budget. Ann and I were just talking, and she said it's over 400 pages, and I said, "I wish Washington Counties was that small," but no such luck. The GFOA established this award program in 1984 to encourage and assist state and local governments to prepare budget documents of the highest quality that reflect both the guidelines established by the National Advisory Council and the GFOA's best practices on budgeting. There are 27 specific criteria grouped into four basic categories. To receive this award, the document must be rated either proficient or outstanding by two of the three reviewers in all four basic categories, as well as 14 of the 27 specific categories. In Oregon, there are 51 recipients of this budget award, of which 23 are cities. This is the 25th consecutive year that the city of Albany has received this award, and I'd also like to mention, along with the budget award, they get special, you get special recognition for the performance measures that you include in your budget, and Albany is one of only two cities in the state of Oregon that receives this special recognition, so congratulations for that as well. The last award is the city comprehensive, man, comprehensive annual financial report, or CAFR. The CAFR program was established in 1945 to encourage and assist state and local governments to go beyond the minimum requirements of the generally accepted accounting principles and prepare a comprehensive financial report that showed transparency and full disclosure. I really believe it's the most difficult GFOA award to achieve. The checklist that is used by the GFOA is 79 pages long with over 500 items, and of those 500 items, there are 124 specific that if any one requirement is not appropriately presented, that one failure could disqualify the entire report. These items could be as simple as a table of contents, or as complex as combining financial statements with mini-funds and such. In Oregon, there's 112 recipients of this award, of which only 38 are cities, and this is the 31st consecutive year for the city of Albany to receive this recognition, so congratulations. By achieving this award, the city of Albany has ensured that its financial statements are more than just numbers. The customers and cities, citizens of Albany can be assured that its financial position is transparent, fully disclosed, and of the highest quality comparable at a national level. Of course, the recognition for the receipt of this award should include Ann Baker, Gina Jaeger, and Stuart Taylor, and along with the entire finance staff, but let not, let's not forget city manager Wes Hare, mayor, and the rest of the city commissioners, for all the various committee members, and all the other department managers and staff that work together to provide an environment of excellence here at the city of Albany. Your citizens should be very proud, so congratulations to each of you. I'd like to present these awards to Ann and Gina if they're...
Congratulations.
Wow, it's wonderful. Thank you, Roger. Yeah, so we are very fortunate in Albany to have such quality staff and, and be able to be a recipient of the award for many years, but it is amazing to know 500 items on a checklist is a lot. So, great job Gina, and great job Ann and Stuart, so you have a wonderful team working with you, but, and we're very grateful for the hard work, so thank you. Thank you, Roger, for attending.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, did council have any questions at all? Okay, all right, yeah, thank you. Next on the agenda, this is, will be a public hearing, and it's accepting conveyance of city-owned real property to the trustees of the Frank and Winifred Moore Revocable Living Trust and Reserving and Easement. And, so with that, at 7:25 PM, I will open the public hearing, and Wes or Jim, did you want to?
Jim has deferred to me tonight to give a brief report. I think the council's familiar with this issue. As we purchased the property where the fire station, the new fire station will be built, we discovered that there had been sort of an historic issue with about eight feet of To make a long story short, the solution that we settled on with the neighbors who owned this, or were using the eight feet of property, that we thought initially was included in the purchase that we made, we agreed that we thought we could satisfy everybody's interests. We were not interested in tearing down the Moores' garage, or disrupting their yard in any way, nor were we particularly interested in trying to make money off the transaction. But we did want to ensure that we would not lose, potentially lose like parking spaces as a result of being too close to their property line, so there was an agreement reached or an interpretation made by the development department that that eight feet could be used as a buffer that would ordinarily have to be on, on the fire department's side of the property, which then led us to the conclusion that we could give the property to the Moores, so that it would be, they would have unencumbered title to the property and be able to sell it, while we would retain an easement for the purpose of ensuring that the landscape buffer would be, would not cause us to lose use of our property. I think both parties were in agreement with that. It took us a while, and I apologize that it did, to come up with this, this plan, but we're now at a point where we believe we can complete the transaction. I think it's to everybody's benefit, and I'd be glad to answer questions, or have Jim answer questions if the need arises.
Any questions? Okay. Is there anyone that wanted to comment on this item? There wasn't anyone that signed up. Okay, seen anyone?
Motion to approve.
Okay, motion to approve?
Second.
And for the record, you're approving the quick claim deed that's on the dais, not the one that was in the packet.
Right.
Yes, sir.
That's correct, that's the change.
And what the resolution?
Well, the deed is the, with the resolution is the deed, the quick claim deed, and this is the one that is being approved tonight.
Okay, any discussion?
You need to close the hearing before we vote.
Oh, sure do. Yes, the hearing is closed at 7:27 PM, so, any discussion?
Done again?
And denounce.
Say it again.
All right. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Okay, motion carried. All right, thank you, Moore family, yeah, thank you. Okay, next is business from the public, and is there anyone here that would like to bring an item forward? All right, yes, sir. Or, did you have anything, Tom? Or, no? Okay.
I do.
Oh, okay.
I didn't want to necessarily reverse that.
Okay, all right. Yes, sir. Uh-huh, you'd need to state your names, spell your last name, and furnish your address.
My name is Michael Lesmeister, and I live at 3391 Lion Street Southeast, and my, my last name is spelled L-E-S-M-E-I-S-T-E-R, and I'm here to support the business across the street from where I live, west coast, and I support them and their business. I have lived at my residence, my wife and I, for 13 years, and we have had, since they've been here, we have had no complaints, no trouble with them. They're really nice. They came in, the prior person that owned the business, it was bad, there was a lot of garbage, and there were fifth wheels and trailers in the back with homeless people, and there was drug use there, and Michael and Ricky bought the business and really cleaned it up, landscaped it, looks really nice, and we, we just don't, we don't care if they're there, they're, you know, they're good, good people, and they're there to make a business like anyone, support their families, and they do have employees too that make a living and support their families also, so I would like them to stay.
Okay, all right, thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to have an item from Business from the Public? Yes. So is there, I see we're having comments then on the marijuana issue, so go ahead, sir, and start, and if there's going to be more, then I think I'll ask the council if what we're wanting to do for a process.
Okay, my name is Kim Fonder, F-O-N-D-E-R. I live at 3371 Lion Street in Albany. It's across the street from the West Coast Alternative Medicine that's located on, off of 34th Street. We're, like I said, right across the, well, actually, I should say thank you for listening to, listen to us talk. We are, I am a homeowner there, so I think there was some concern that the homeowners weren't being represented, or, so, talking with Mike, he had me come down here to say, um, like the, like the previous, he's our, he's our next door neighbor, Mike, and I should say, the, my, Mike, the owner, came to us right from the first, concerned about parking, concerned about the driveway in and out, he was, because he would, you know, he's, he wanted to line up with our driveway, wouldn't, want to make sure it wasn't a problem, so he was, he was already asking us before he even started. He's been very good, he's upgraded the property, you know, only, well, partly because of the code that they asked me to, he has security, and he has, he just cleaned it up real nice, there's not any blaring signs, we don't see any signs from our side, they're facing the 34th Street side. Very, he's really enhanced the property. The previous owner was, had issues from the start, so he has really taken over and just made it, made it his own. He's always, you know, we've always, we've always, he's been approachable to us, we could walk over, he'd talk to us, he'd spend the time to listen, because we were interested too in what he was doing, and what he was, you know, what it was, but he's been a very good, you know, positive influence on that property, so I would just say that let him be a businessman and make the money he should, I mean, that's, rather than banning this issue, you know, give it a year, so that they can, you know, have some sort of track record, some data behind it, that, you know, are they doing, you know, are they doing what they're supposed to be doing, are they just tracking everything correctly, and I think he's going to be a very good positive influence on that, so that's, just, I want to let everybody know that, so.
All right, thank you. So, council, before we hear more testimony, as it's kind of unknown of how much, are you, are you wanting to visit this item this evening, or if so, then we're thinking, there could be a process that we could take, and it would be having our city attorney come back with all the options that we could be looking at, and bring it to the next work session, or have a special work session on Monday, and be able to just devote towards this subject, and be able to kind of narrow down those options? What do you think of that?
Could I explain, mayor, what I've, this is something that I was suggesting, I spoke to the mayor about earlier. First of all, to the best of my knowledge, there is nothing on the agenda tonight about banning recreational marijuana. I'm not sure where that story came from, but it's not on the agenda unless somebody's going to propose to ban it at Business from the Council, it's not up tonight. It was never up tonight. It's clear, however, from the discussions that have gone on, that there has been difficulty, I think, for the council in figuring out really what all of your options are, and without knowing what your options are, it's difficult to choose. And it seemed to me that what we could do is, we could have a work session that would be devoted to listing for you what all of the options and decision points are, because as I mentioned on Monday, to some degree, not taking action is in fact taking an action because it forecloses you from making some choices. So what I would like to suggest is that you set a work session solely for the purpose of determining what your options are. Sean and I would come to that with a list of our analysis of what each of those options are, and what the sub-decisions might be under those options. I would suggest that you would devote the last half hour of your meeting to public comment in case the public thinks there are other options. For this to work, as I am hoping, it would, we'd need to strike a bargain with the council and with the public, that the purpose of that meeting would not be to advocate for one option or another, but to try to see if we could get an agreement about what the choices are. It becomes much easier to choose something if you know truly what is available to you, and what the legalities are about each choice. So again, my proposal would be that we schedule a meeting, it could be, we could try to get ready if you wanted to do a special meeting on Monday, or you could have it at your next regular work session, and again, the purpose would be to get the options determined. Then, after you know what your choices are, you would come away with that with a work product, and the work product would be essentially a document that would give you, I'm guessing, about six different choices. One of the choices, of course, would be to do nothing, to abolish the current ban, and to simply proceed with sales, so that would be one of the choices that would be available, as well as choices that would include a ban and a vote to the voters in November. There's a range of choices. Then I am hoping that armed with that document, you could, at whatever time you choose, schedule it for a decision, and somebody will make a motion, and somebody will second it, or they won't, and you will see whether or not there are four votes for any of the available options. That was just a path forward that I was hoping might be useful.
Jay and then Bessie.
Sounds, sounds very plausible, but I was under the impression, and maybe Sean can fill us in, that they were under kind of a time crunch for some of these, so if we're going to do this, I would rather do it sooner than later.
I think the time crunch, and Sean can correct me, is we have to have some decisions made by the end of the year.
Right. It would, it would be preferable to have them done by the end of the year, anyway. There's not necessarily, here's the time crunch that we could be facing. We know that OLCC will start accepting applications January the 4th of next year for recreational marijuana facilities. We've been told by OLCC that they don't anticipate issuing licenses for these facilities until late summer or early in the fall, but the gray area is that in that process, once they receive an application, they are going to send a letter of compliance back to the city, and ask the city whether or not the applicant meets the current land use criteria, zoning criteria, et cetera. At that point, the city has 21 days to respond to it, so the concern that we have is that if we don't do anything, if we, if we take the wait-and-see approach through February, March, or whatever, and we get one of these letters, then the city staff is kind of tied, and they're going to have to make a decision based on what's currently in the code, so if the council would like to see changes made to the, the current ordinance, we would want to do that sooner than later, and that's kind of where our time crunch is. It's not something that's, for lack of a better word, after the last call, it's not an emergency where we, we need to do it Monday. If, if you would like to, we could, but we, you know, we would want to do it sooner than later, I would suggest, anyway.
I'd like to see it this coming Monday.
Bessie, and then Rich.
Well, and I appreciate the suggestion, Jim, because I have listened, I have read, and it's just really confusing to what our options are right now, and so I would rather have the work session, if it's Monday, that's fine, to have it listed, because what was said at the work session, and what was in the paper, it's, it's probably all the same, but said differently, and so I, I just think it'd be better if we actually had it all in writing as to what our options are, so I'd appreciate that.
I should make sure, I didn't check with Sean, Ken, you're going to be the, I'm writing checks for you to cash.
That's why, I was going to say, that's why I was saying, you don't have to have it Monday. Yeah, so.
Why?
I could, we could, there's not, just, just so we're clear too, there's not a, a five options, or six options, we, I mean, you can, there's all kinds of varieties of things you could do. We'll list your general options, and then there's, obviously, you can go and tweak those, right, exactly, you know, tweak those to, to what you would desire to do, but, yeah, we can definitely put those up to, you know, we could have those by Monday. I would, would hope that if we, whatever date we do it, if it's at all possible, that we have all the council available that day to hear it and participate in those discussions.
And again, the other thing that I think is really important for this to work, is for us not to get engaged in advocacy at that meeting about which option. The goal of that meeting is to get on the table the various choices that you would have, and the timelines that might impact your decisions.
And just briefly, I wanted to clarify with Jorge as well, because Jorge has graciously volunteered to help put a presentation, a slide presentation together, so I don't know if Monday would work with you, or, okay, just checking, because that's what we were planning on doing, is putting a presentation together like that, so.
For me, the bottom line is, let's do it right. I mean, we have a history of, we did something quickly, and there were unintended consequences, and, you know, better to take a couple of weeks, or three weeks, or whatever it is that we know we can do to make it, so we don't have the problems we ended up with after our first somewhat inarticulate attempt at justice.
And I think we'd appreciate that, it would give us a little more time to argue among ourselves, frankly, about whether we're missing anything. That's a process that's kind of good for you, when you've got two lawyers now that are engaged in this, there's a lot of spirited debate that goes on in our office about what we can do.
We're not paying extra for you guys debating each other.
No, you're not.
The other, the other thing also is, it would, I would like to have staff, and I think you might want this as well, is have our staff be able to put a map together to show you if we do a certain option where, for, and I'll, as a hypothetical, if we were to remove the 300-foot industrial exception, where in the city would these sites be able to locate? And I, and I'm not sure that they'll be able to have that to you on Mon, they might, but I'm just not sure.
Well, and another example of why it might be a good idea to give us a little more time, is one of the issues is going to be whether or not new regulations, if you choose to enact them, will be done as land use regulations, or be contained within the general municipal code. I think that community development is going to want to consider what the time and process would be if you do that, so that you know how that would affect your schedule, and so there are, there will be some interdepartmental involvement in the debate, but the key is, I'd like to be able to bring you a lift, that staff is thoroughly vetted, that we're confident these are the options, that you can give us other options, and that the public, if they think that we've missed options, could give us options. But again, the bargain, for this to work, I think for the public as well, you'd have to recognize that that meeting, when there is citizen input, wouldn't be to advocate one choice or the other, but would be to make sure we have on the table agreement on what the various choices are, and then the council at another public meeting would decide what they want to do.
Phil, did you, could change, anybody else have questions? Okay, does the council want to take this up on Monday at a work session?
I think Monday's too quick.
You don't think so, Dick?
Well, for one thing, they're saying they might want more time to get stuff together.
But it, with your permission...
And for the other thing is, I would like to have the meeting be in the evening, so that people can observe what we're doing. Maybe Monday evening, but I don't think Monday at 4:00 would be good.
We can make it a regular council meeting.
Is this room available, Monday?
Probably not getting it available, Floyd, did you?
Yeah, I think Monday's too soon, I think Stephanie's in time to make sure they put it all together, and I'm going to be out of town the 26th and the 28th, so that really leaves like the first week in November for the opportunity to have either a special work session, or, you know, a Wednesday would be a fine, special meeting on Wednesday evening, because I will be coming in, back in town either late the 1st or early on the 2nd.
We have a regular council meeting on November 4th.
Probably not getting available. Floyd, did you?
Yeah, I think Monday's too soon. I think Stephanie's in time to make sure they put it all together. And I'm going to be out of town the 26th and the 28th, so that really leaves like the first week in November for the opportunity to have either a special work session or, you know, a Wednesday would be a fine special meeting on Wednesday evening. I will be coming in, back in town either late the 1st or early on the 2nd.
We have a regular council meeting on November 4th already.
So.
We could do a special meeting on Tuesday.
The 21st, we do have CARA next Wednesday. We could meet afterwards, but.
Well, I don't know that this is going to require two hours. I mean, hopefully, we will bring you the list. Hopefully, we will have it right and everyone will agree those are the choices. And you may ask questions about the choices.
Well, let's go this, how many counselors would like to meet Monday at 4:00?
Well, no. I think Dick's got a good point about having it in the evening.
Okay, how many, how many are available Monday at, in the evening at 7:00?
Yeah, I am.
So, so do you want to, how about after CARA meeting on Wednesday, the 21st? No?
I, I do think it's critical that everyone be here. You know, we've had this problem before and the information gets dribbled out and not everybody's hearing the same thing at the same time, and that just leads to more and more confusion.
What about Tuesday, the 20th, in the evening?
I'll be gone.
Okay, 22nd?
I didn't bring one.
In the evening, Thursday?
I think I'll be.
Thursday.
22nd, I'm gone.
I'm gone.
Okay, we already have Monday, the 26th. So available is, Marilyn, is there pressing issues for that work session?
I'm, I'm gone.
Oh, and you're gone.
Be back in town November 1st or early on the 2nd.
Okay, well, we do have a work session scheduled for Monday on the 2nd. And are you back then, Floyd?
I will be.
Okay. Would Monday, the 2nd, work for everyone?
I think so.
Depends on what's on the schedule.
Okay.
I'd have to check.
Realistically, if we see a half a dozen things it could be, yeah, we recognize what those are, we may, that may make us think of other things that are better or worse, as the case may be, that, you know, so if we could have it sooner, email to us the, the list, so we could arrive with, yeah, did you think of this thing or that thing or the other thing?
Absolutely. That would be easy for us to do. And when we put that draft list together that we send out with the council's permission, we could put it on the website so that similarly, the interested public could see what the city attorney's office came up with as the possible list of alternatives.
About 4:00 on Monday, the 2nd or later?
2nd, and then we meet the 4th for the city council meeting, so.
Okay, so it'd be a normal work session. But dedicated to just this, yeah.
Right. So is everyone okay on that date? Everyone available?
In the evening?
We can make that in the evening.
Let me just ask.
What time, 7:15?
Yeah, 7:00 or 7:15, we can make it 7:15.
Are you saying Monday, 7:15?
Yeah.
In lieu of the regular work session.
Right, I understand.
And just in case there is other pressing business that we have to take care of, Marilyn, you can let us know if we end up needing to be meeting at our regular work session time and then we can just take a break and.
I can check that before this meeting's over.
Yeah, okay, all right. So let's put that down for November 2nd. That'll be the work session over this issue. Okay? All right. Okay, thank you, folks. Okay, with that, we are still in business from the public. So Tom, I'm presuming you've got something?
Tom Porter, 2240, Northwest Park Terrace in Albany. Only one question. Do you think that that, that list that's, would be developed, would be available on the Friday, like normal stuff comes out on Friday before the Monday?
I would imagine.
Yeah.
Possibly even before that.
Okay, that's all. Thanks.
Okay, that's it? All right. Thank you, Tom. Yep, yes, sir.
I'm Skylar McCollum, M C C O L L A U M. I live at 2175 Pine Metal Drive here in Albany. I was hoping tonight to represent the combat veterans here in Albany, much less Oregon. And just to let you all know that we sincerely appreciate everything you guys are doing and we would like you all to know that we really do want cannabis and that it is one of the only things that can help us where pills and alcohol do not, but that's what's readily available for us and we don't have recreational marijuana, especially cannabis oils or things to help with seizures or anxiety or depression or slew of other things in which, it's not smoking marijuana that helps, it's eating it, just like eating your normal fruits and vegetables. We need to be able to grow our plants and not have it limited to such a small amount where, you know, the harvest season comes and it's only so long in this environment. So unless it's readily available to the community in all forms, then we aren't going to be able to live here or have industry here. And I really hope that progress with our health continues and doesn't get slowed down because of money. And I really hope you guys will be able to understand how cannabis works and how, you know, just like many things can be abused, but in the end, it's one of the most wonderful plants we have right now to help ourselves and we need it, and we need you all's support with it. Thank you very much.
And you do know that we do have medical marijuana facilities in Albany?
I do. It's that recreational is going to become available, but then now it's not available, recreationally.
Temporarily, yes.
And then I also heard that only flower was available, when all the medicinal quali, like medical qualities are found and eating it, not. So it's all readily available, very healthy stuff that's been tested to make sure it isn't going to get people sick and have mildews and all that. So to be able to buy this stuff would be much easier than by purchasing flour and making our own medical tinctures to help with seizures and slew of other things.
Okay, all right. Thank you, Skylar.
Thank you very much. Just hope you all understand how much it helps.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Okay, is there anyone else from business from the public? So, yes, sir?
Hello, my name is John McNeil. And I've talked to my doctor about a medical marijuana card.
Could you state your address, too?
I'm sorry?
Could you state your address also?
I've talked to my doctor about it.
Okay.
And it's against their policy to, to do it at that clinic.
She wants your address.
Oh, my address?
Yes.
1735 Southeast 23rd Court here in Albany.
Okay.
And the, the only way I can get a message to my legs to walk is by smoking pot. I don't know why that is, it just is. And the only way I can do it is to go to a dispensary to get it. And if you stop that, I, I may not be able to walk again, and that don't look good to me.
Oh, yeah. Well, no.
I'd certainly like to see the dispensaries stay open.
Uh-huh.
I've met a lot of people there that, that are older like myself, that, that have similar problems. And the only way open to them is going to dispensary to get it, same as myself. So I thank you for listening.
And the council isn't looking at closing down medical marijuana dispensaries, so you'll still have your medicine.
Well.
Yeah, that's not, that, it's not the question to the council. It's only adding recreational. But you'll still have your medicine with the medicine, marijuana facilities, yeah.
Understood. You couldn't do that without a card, but I don't have a card.
Yeah, you can, and cards, if you're a senior citizen, they're only $20.
Living in a one-bedroom apartment, I hardly have room to grill marijuana.
No, you, you can still get a, a medical marijuana card. And if you're on social security, it's, if you're getting SSI, it's only $20. And if you're a veteran, it's $20. If you're on social security.
You have to have a doctor's signature for that.
Uh-huh.
And my doctor says it's against their policy to do that. Samaritan.
Oh, okay.
Medical, they won't even consider it.
Mm-hmm.
He said he wouldn't even discuss it with me because he's afraid to get a chart note.
Oh, uh-huh, yeah.
Okay, I thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Back here?
Okay.
Ooh, doggy. Thank you.
Uh-huh, thank you. Is there anyone else from business from the public? All right, not seeing anybody. Okay, council, next on the agenda, this would be first reading of the ordinance. And before we read that, then this is, we had it at the work session and it was to bring forward for the council. This was at a former work session, actually council meeting, and it was clarifying some language that was in the ordinance over our community development commission. So there was a few changes on it. Is there questions or do you want the first reading read?
Make a motion for approval of the first reading.
I'll go ahead with the first reading. An ordinance amending Albany Municipal Code, Chapter 2.27, Community Development Commission.
I'll make a motion, the ordinance be read a second time, title only. Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, all right, that's going to be held over. So, all right. And next is adoption of the consent calendar.
I'll make a motion for adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Okay, motion carried. And next is the code enforcement report. Marilyn.
Marilyn went to check on the work session agenda.
Oh, she did. So, does anybody have, or Wes, did you want to?
Just to say that I think the code squad continues to do a really good job with some limited resources. We are talking about somewhat of a different model involving transfer of some responsibilities to the police department, probably relying more on our community service officers with some of our code squad issues. But again, I think, you know, we're, we're always trying to strike a balance between, you know, keeping disputes between neighbors, code infractions, you know, at a minimum, but at the same time not being too aggressive with folks so that they don't have the opportunity to enjoy their property. So it's, it's one of the most difficult things that I think we do in the city is, you know, try and strike that right balance. Sometimes we probably do better than others, but I think in general, the code squad does an outstanding job. They really work hard at being considerate of the interests of all the people who are parties to, you know, different disputes and issues.
And they do, do a fantastic job. And there's been a lot of challenging, you know, code issues, you know, enforcement issues that they've had to tackle lately, but, you know, considering the amount of, little amount of resources that we put in, it's, it's pretty demanding and I actually think our council's going to be looking at in the future where we probably would want to even add additional staff or, or to be able to fund more of one of the positions more full-time to be able to handle the work and caseload, so.
What, you know, the classic example of one of the, we have a, like most cities, we have a restriction on people's ability to live in recreational vehicles located next to homes. And in some cases, people do that out of medical necessity. In some cases, you know, they're caring for a sick parent, for example, so they bring their trailer into town and they want to park it on their parents' property while they care for someone who may be recovering. We're very, you know, we've been able, we have a system, it comes, those permits come to my office, we're generally able to work through them. But bear in mind, we usually hear about them because somebody's complaining about it. You're devaluing my property and so forth. We have one currently that's more of an economic necessity, they need to temporarily live in this, or make use of a fifth wheel. And so we'll try and get the story, work with both, with the people who are complaining and with the people who are trying to live there, and ideally craft a solution that works best for all parties. So, again, just might, it's appropriate that Marilyn was out of the room and we were saying nice things about her, so we can go back to the norm now.
Complaining now.
Okay, any questions on the report? Marilyn came back in, so. Any questions?
Just a quick question for next year.
I have multiple updates.
Next year, do we have a general idea possibly where the big pickup will be?
We don't. We don't. We're, we usually talk about that in January.
So one of your updates might have been on the 2215, 2217 Jefferson Court.
Yes, sir.
And you were going to take bids on demolishing it?
Yep, we got bids. We are ready to go in November. They started abatement on the asbestos portion today. The subcontractor was doing that today.
Yeah.
So we're going to have some very happy neighbors when that thing comes down.
And then the other one that, I don't know that's on the list, but on 33rd, we got the petition of the people on parties in the cul-de-sac and the garbage and.
Yeah. As of today, one of our community service officers, she spoke to the, the new manager there last week, actually, there's a new manager of the apartments on the north side where the problem area is. She's hauled off three dumpster loads of junk from there. They've moved the dumpster into the parking lot, not, and out of the cul-de-sac. All that remains in the parking lot right now was one plastic chair and a recycling bin, and those are going to be moved also. She's been talking to the tenants, telling them they can't congregate there, they can't dump things there like they were doing, and they're going to be making sure that everything stays in the parking lot, not in the cul-de-sac. The neighbors still would like to have that end of the cul-de-sac fenced off, so that, because there's a continual problem with people from the apartments. That is a, a problem complex for the police department, has been for some time. But there, there's a problem with, with tenants from there and elsewhere crossing people's properties, stealing things, breaking things, littering, so on and so forth, and they would like to deter that as much as they can. That, the bulb of the cul-de-sac is not city right-of-way, it's private property, and it's shared equally by the, the two apartment complexes. It would be, I'm not sure what it would take to, to put a fence there, but we would have to maintain fire access, at least allow the, leave room for the fire trucks to turn around. So that's, but the community resource officer is hopeful. She says that the new manager is very aggressive and she believes that she'll take care of the problem.
Yeah, that's good. And I know it was a surprise when we found out that the cul-de-sac was not, you know, a city right-of-way and it was privately owned, so.
Any question? I, I looked on it, on, online.
Yeah.
Wait a minute, those lines don't go there.
It looks like the same complex, but it is two different owners, north and south.
It was built as, yeah, it was built as one complex under one ownership in 1970. And somewhere in the middle, yeah, somewhere since then it's split up and, yeah, it's two separate owners.
So now they sort of block off from the apartments the access to the cul-de-sac. But if they opened it up, then you would have plenty of access and they wouldn't need 33rd. If they just took their little chain down and then they would have access, but, yeah. So I think it is something to kind of look at. If it continues, we might have to look at seeing about blocking off 33rd and maybe just putting up some emergency access bollards in there in case, you know, fire apparatus needed to get in to that area.
That wouldn't stop foot traffic.
Right.
And it's foot traffic that's the primary problem.
Yeah, they do get that, yeah, so. Okay, any other questions, Marilyn?
I have one.
Uh-huh.
On, on the 9th Avenue, one, actually it's 103.7 radio station. Now, you said it's, it was sold and closed on July 20th, and it's still a problem or the new owner's not doing anything?
I don't, haven't had an update on that, but.
Okay.
But July 20th is like yesterday in the world of code enforcement.
Oh, yeah.
We wait years, years on a lot of these. That one at least is boarded up and secure for now.
Okay, good.
And that's good, that's good enough.
All right, that's a hundred and out.
Until they do something. We had heard that they were going to do some transitional housing there, but it's not zoned properly, so I'm not sure what's going to happen.
So I'm not sure what's going to happen.
Great.
And speaking of years and years, on the next page, 4030 Shortridge Street.
Yeah.
Which has been vacant for five years, I believe, and the weeds are five feet high. It's up for auction, sheriff's sale on October 20th. It's been on sheriff's sale schedules a couple of other times and been pulled. That happens a lot. So we're hopeful this time that it's going to go through.
Why do they get pulled?
I don't know the answer to that, Dick. It's the lenders that do it.
Okay, that's what I was going to ask.
Do you want to get rid of that stuff?
I thought they would too, but they don't, apparently.
When they get rid of it, they have to then take the loss on their books.
Yeah. And the longer they sit there rotting in Albany city streets, the bigger the loss is.
The loss, loss should get better and bigger.
That's just my opinion.
Sometimes, in my experience, sometimes it's just not worth their while to spend money to do anything with it. And so they just let it go.
It's certainly worth their while to the neighbors.
Oh, yeah, exactly.
I think we need to find some way to make it worth their while.
I think so too.
Some kind of fine or some kind of pressure.
Lean on it.
They pay the fines, we lean them, or we send them bills and they pay the fines. They're going to be paying for the demolition of Jefferson Court. That's a, that's a bank, well, they tossed it back to the original owners, but the bank's still responsible as far as we know, so they're going to be getting the bill.
Interesting, yeah, that's...
And they've been very good about paying bills for fencing, for boarding it up, for other things that we've done over the last couple of years.
It's weird doing that.
And we're charging staff time as well, which our ordinance allows.
Have at them.
And it's considerable.
Marilyn, back to the KRKT building. I was talking with James Brooks, the owner of the station that's adjacent to it.
Right.
He's been having rat problems coming in from that building into his station and broken windows in the rear.
Those have been boarded up?
No, broken windows in his building.
Oh, in his building, okay.
From people accessing the other building.
Okay.
And then he's had several incidents where he comes in, opens up in the morning and his shop area has rats running around in it from next door. So whatever we can do to put the pressure on to get the issue of the rats and potential health effects down and keep them from invading other properties.
Is that the building on Ninth Street?
Yes, the KRKT building.
I know they, who purchased it, so it's a nonprofit that ended up purchasing it. So they met with me probably a couple of months ago and they had bought it wanting it for transitional housing. I said, you know, it's not zoned that, so I'm not sure what they're going to do.
That could be a great place for it.
So, yeah, it's just, they've got some work to do and very limited funds. So I can get the information to Marilyn and she can contact them to see if they can deal with the rats.
Business?
It's commercial.
And you can't live in a commercial zone, can't have a house in a commercial zone?
Not as housing in that type of commercial. I think it was community commercial in there. So, but I don't know what all they have done over any of the land use process, so.
Why do we not allow people to live in a commercial zone if they want to?
Oh, I'm not sure, Dick. It's in our code. I did tell them to go down to planning and work with planning, so I have not heard since.
They do, it's mixed-use commercial.
Yeah, we have, we have commercial zones that where residences are allowed and, you know, like above a business.
Yeah.
Run into some conflicts with that occasionally. Remember, we had the issue down here with the old, fixing up the old...
Fort Millar building, yeah.
But there are zones where you're restricted. Usually the reason that that's been done historically is conflicts between residential and commercial uses, noise, complaints about, you know, car exhaust, horns, you know, the whole odors. Those are the, have typically been the reasons. You may recall, we had the issues that arose when we had, when we had the pub down on Elm Street.
Yes.
You know, those kinds of conflicts, you try and zone those out to some degree without trying to be too restrictive.
Well, I think that's the, I think that's the opposite of what I'm thinking about.
Yeah.
If somebody wants to buy a house in a commercial zone, live in it, that's your choice.
Yeah, of course, it's not really a house, that's the other issue. It's a, it was a commercial office building and...
The one we're talking about now, next to the gas station, it's a house, isn't it?
It's a commercial building, but there's...
Well, it's a commercial zone, it's been used commercial, but it is a house, if I'm thinking the right one.
Yeah.
I don't know if that one's a house or the one next door. The house is to the west. Yeah.
Oh, is that a different building?
The old historic house?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's to the west. This is one of the... No, this is a box with a parking lot next to it. Okay, all right, anything else on code enforcement? All right, thank you, Marilyn. Hey, Business From the Council, Bessie?
Anything? Not that I can think of.
Okay, Bill?
Good night, thanks.
Yeah, the other night we were all kind of flummoxed by ODOT not wanting us to have the two-turn left lane onto, onto the highway there off of, over there in North Albany. And I was tempted to bring up another one, but it was late and so I thought I'd leave it till tonight. And the other day I was talking to the fire chief about the possibility of enlarging the lobby of our fire station so we could have maybe more than one fire engine in our, in the lobby. And he said, "Well, I hesitate to do that because we really need sight distance." And Hossel, can you hear me? Is my microphone working? Apparently not. Okay, well, I'll try harder. And so I said, "Well, now, chief, do you really need that sight distance? Because don't we have a stoplight there on Lion Street that if the fire engines pull out, cars will stop because of the stoplight?" Well, he said, "ODOT tells us that when we build our new fire station, that one just won't work, so you're going to have to take it out." And I said, "Well, I just do without a stoplight there?" "Well, yeah, I guess so, that's what ODOT says." So, talking to Ron Irish, he said he was able to get them to agree to putting up a couple of little stop signs along the side of the street there, but then had to take out that, that stoplight on Lion Street. And a couple of questions. One is, is ODOT prepared to come down and take that out if we just leave it there? Will it stay there or do we have to pay the cost of taking it out?
I would be very surprised if we did not have to pay the cost of taking it out.
And the second question is, should we raise the issue that it doesn't really make much sense to take out a perfectly good stoplight, which seems to have done the, done the job over the years of preventing accidents? I asked the chief, "Have we had any cases where cars have run into fire trucks as they came pulling out with our present stoplight situation?" "No," he said, "we haven't." But he said, "We have had cars run into fire trucks." And I said, "Well, where was that?" "Well," he said, "that's out on 34th where we didn't have any light." "Until soon, we're going to have a light there and it'll probably stop that problem of cars running into our fire trucks." So I'm wondering, is there some way that we could maybe go to a higher, higher level to ask the question? Is it smart to take out that stoplight until such time as ODOT might provide the funds to put in there? Apparently they think there ought to be a new, better stoplight setup that'll stop traffic on Sixth as well as Lion when the fire trucks pull out. And I thought as walking back and forth in that area over to hasty trees and so forth, I very seldom see any traffic on Sixth. But nonetheless, ODOT and their wisdom is thinking that's what's needed. And we don't have the money for it, they don't have the money for it. And in the meantime, they'd like to have us take out the light that we have when we build a new station, so. Can we apply, can I apply to anybody for respite on this?
We can absolutely check. You know, Ron has been really effective at working with ODOT over the years and trying to, you know, protect our interests. He's on, I believe he's on vacation right now, but when he gets back, we'll be glad to talk with him and see if we can, who we might talk to to see if there's some alternative. We felt, I think he felt like we made a lot of progress because at one point we were looking at a significant additional expense to meet what ODOT wanted us to do. And I think we got past that. I think Stacy participated in the discussion, she might be able to shed some light on the issue.
It's all Stacy's fault, whatever it is.
She's the solution to the problem.
That's right.
Well, she's probably nicer than Ron is, so, you know.
So I did not attend the meeting up in Salem when Ron met with ODOT, but my understanding was that we did make really good progress. Initially, we were looking at a full traffic signal at both Seventh and Ellsworth and Seventh and Lions. And ODOT does not think that's necessary. The improvements that we proposed, which included a protected crosswalk just south of where the apparatus driveway extends into Lion, ODOT liked that. And then they also, as Counselor Olson mentioned, identified locations just south of the crosswalk where they would be putting stop signs. And I think the flashing beacon is still under discussion. It doesn't meet current standards, so it's something that they would want the city to look at upgrading. But I know that Ron was going to be having further discussions with ODOT once he got back.
Oh, good, I'm glad to hear that. And I had one other item.
Thank you, Stacy.
Yesterday, day before, there was a, an emergency at Central School. Someone called saying they'd planted a bomb in the school. And our police department and fire department went over and ushered the kids out. And a friend of mine is a teacher there at Central School. And I'll take a look at this if I can find it to, so I can quote her exactly. She said, her comment was that the cops were awesome. So I wanted to say thank you to our police department for being awesome in ushering the kids over to the St. Mary's School in Baggs. So, so thank you for that. And thank you to our fire department, too.
Yeah, that is quite scary to have it at two, two facilities, you know, but yeah, it's pretty sad to see that.
I was somewhat surprised, though, I read information about that happening in the newspaper website before we got the press release from the police department and fire department saying that there had been a problem.
That's because Alex was in the commissioners' meeting with me when it came over the PA that it had happened. And he got on his cellphone to the Democrat Arrow right then. So it was as the alarm was going off.
Yeah, wow.
So the county hears about that stuff before we do, apparently.
It was just on a scanner or something?
Coincidence.
Well, it was, it was on their emergency system, so, you know, because it gets broadcast on their, on their PA system when there's an emergency. I don't know if it does all the time or not, but it did then.
Yeah, okay, anything else, Dick? Is that it? Okay, yeah, Rich?
I have a couple requests. Updates on the crosswalk over by Les Schwab. The lights that don't seem to be there. And a similar situation on Waverly, I understand is in the CIP, is that, and where is it in the CIP? I've had my ear bent a couple of times.
Staff can get back to you.
We have the, the one there by Schwab's is the one we're, we're still working on, right, Stacy? ODOT, we forgot, we're on what, like our third? There was some right-of-way constraints there that we were, that we were trying to work within.
The plans are essentially completed. There's, the poles need to be, we're the, we're just trying to verify that we have the right-of-way to locate the poles. And so the, the plans, I mean, you could be seeing the plans advertised as early as November.
You can go ahead and forward them to me if you want.
So, yeah, they're, they're close to being finished. It does, it does involve coordination with the adjacent property owners because there's the potential that we're going to need an easement from them to locate the poles. We think we have enough right-of-way. K and D was out there, I believe, just last week and they marked the right-of-way. And so once Chris Kloski goes out and verifies that, we'll be able to finalize the plans and get them out the door. He's been, he's been busy with North Albany and some other, other projects, so hadn't, hadn't gone out there yet.
Well, I would appreciate knowing sooner rather than later because, well, my left ear keeps getting the reverberation from the phone. That's all I have, thank you.
The other location, I believe, is, is one that we're, we applied for grant money for.
Yes, one side of the grant.
We're, we're thinking we're going to get those funded through ODOT grants, but we're waiting for their process to go through.
Somebody getting hit twice, that's probably a little better chance.
I believe we're going to score well, so we should have funding for more, more than just one.
That's the other ear.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Ray? Floyd?
No.
Well, let's see, Counsel, I've got three items tonight, so I kind of made reference to them on Monday. First would be the gentleman that came here on Monday, Mr. Melvin. He was the one that was wanting to have free bus passes or with color ride. I had a 45-minute call, you know, phone call with him, I think it was about the week before. And, you know, I explained to him what the process is and if we gave, you know, you know, free, you know, bus passes, we'd have to do it to everyone. And also, there's thousands of people that are in our community that are, you know, handicapped. And we couldn't, you know, we do not have the resources to give everyone a, basically a ride anytime that they would like. So he had told me that if it was a Sunday night and he did want to go someplace, he felt that he should not have to pay for that transportation, that he should be able to get a transportation. And I says, "In a perfect world, yes, it would be wonderful, but there is the funding issues over that." So when he came Monday, still made reference to it. I had, I did tell him to check with Disability Services with Council of Governments to see if there was any other sort of resources there to help him in this situation. And I don't know since Monday if he has contacted, you know, him or not. But I just wanted to know if you're wanting to pursue this or, or not. If you're wanting staff to look into it or we just say this is something that we cannot afford to be able to change our policy? Yeah, Floyd?
Wes, maybe you can refresh my memory. Color ride is funded in part with federal funds coming through the MPO. And then we charge $2 per ride as kind of a local match to do that.
And then there are, I believe also, there are agencies that provide vouchers for folks that are extremely low income as well.
The question, when he was before us, I was, I penciled to Ray, would this be a service that would be eligible for funding under CDBG? If we were talking about qualifying, having a definition for who would qualify? Disabled vets, people on SSI, would that qualify as one of the elements under CDBG?
The short answer is, I don't know. I would think it would, but our, the person who is our specialist is not here tonight. That's something we could certainly look into and can get back to you on.
You know, I think, I think that that could be a very valuable service for some of the disabled that meet some kind of qualification standard. And I think CDBG funding would be the appropriate source to do that. And then general public, we'd still have the $2 or whatever the fee is we set.
But I'm pretty sure, Floyd, that that assistance does exist through other programs, so the question...
Cascade's West Ride Line.
Pardon?
Cascade's West Ride Line provides that service.
Yeah, so... Yeah, so, but I would be happy to have a little bit of a report back to you on the services that are available.
Well, that would be helpful. And at a minimum, what we need to do is have coordinated service delivery. So that if the call comes to us and we can't respond, it automatically goes to them. So the person isn't sitting there wondering, well, who in the heck do I call?
Well, I think, to be truthful, I mean, this isn't anything we hear a lot of complaints about. Now, it is true, even under the best of circumstances, we don't have a system in place where anybody can go, you know, door-to-door, whenever they want to go. I mean, there are limitations, you know, your availability of the resource, there are certainly some costs associated with it. But again, I think we could give you, and it would be good for me, too, to get a better sense of what all the resources are and how we currently coordinate.
I'd be interested in having you follow up on that.
And, I mean, we could, you know, get Phil with, you know, who administers over the Ride Line program, he could give us an update. And I'm pretty sure everything is a certain fee, a dollar or two, you know, charge on some of that, that you do kind of a donation-type charge. Not necessarily. Yeah. On, with. With Ride Line. It depends on which service. And a lot of their service they provide is funded through Medicare, so it is, would be with seniors. And that would not help Mr. Melvin's situation on that. But I do know in my conversation with him is he did not want to pay on any service, but he wants the service to be.
At his beck and call.
Right. More times. He said the bus system is not frequent enough, you know, of a service, too.
Well, not to be a nudge, but I guess I'd point out, he made it here at a specific time. And that cost him or it didn't cost him. I mean, $2 is a very small portion of the cost of the service he is receiving. I mean, there's, almost always an option.
Yeah. Okay, so we can, we can check with CDBG funds if those are available for providing vouchers, and we can all see about the Ride Line on that. The second item, then, is I did have a request, and it was done in an email, and I had just noticed I forgot to send it off at least to Maryland. But I had a request that we ban fireworks in Albany. So I've had this comment before, and actually from several people. And this was, you know, a letter just stating, will the city council consider banning fireworks in Albany? And mostly, or somehow doing more of an enforcement on the illegal fireworks with that. So that is something that is going to have to be the council, whether you want to look into that or not. It's not an easy enforcement on, you know, fireworks, mostly the illegal kind. I myself can get very irritated. I even saw this summer, found two of the illegal ones in my backyard, very close to my fir tree. So it does happen, but, and mostly when we have a summer like we did, it does get a little unnerving when you don't know what will happen. But I've had, I didn't hear it as much this year, I think because it was a drier summer, but I've heard.
It wasn't nearly as much.
In the past, you know, I've heard a lot of illegal fireworks, so, yeah, Bill?
Illegal.
Illegal.
What's the point of outlawing illegal fireworks?
So, so, exactly. Well, I know. I think it would be more, the person wants it more enforced.
One for Dick.
So somehow can you give them higher fines if they get caught?
I can't help it.
Yeah.
I'd be curious to hear from the fire marshal on this because it was my understanding that Albany's rules and regulations on what was allowed for sale was more restrictive than, say, Lynn County. And I, you know, people used to go to Cotton Woods or Lebanon and buy things that you couldn't buy in Albany. If that is true, then it's kind of pointless. You know, I mean, we can't even enforce what we have now.
Dick, I heard Bill, it's late. Well, we don't have a fire marshal, but we're working on it. Secondly, I don't believe that we are necessarily any more restrictive than state law here in Albany. Oregon has pretty restrictive laws generally. I think the bigger problem, and what we hear complaints about, are things that people can buy at the reservations or in other states. Washington has more liberal rules. If you go back, I shouldn't admit this, but when I was a kid, Missouri was like heaven for buying, you know, the very best.
But next year is the last year you're going to be able to go to Vancouver and get them. They did ban them for sale in Vancouver.
So in any event, they're.
Ten miles up the road.
And I, but the problem is that that's where I think we hear most of the complaints. It's, you know, the legal fireworks, you know, probably generate a very little amount. The kinds of things that cause problems are like the bottle rockets and the M-80s and the cherry bombs. And so, and it is, enforcing those is just a nightmare because, you know, people say, oh, well, those people are setting it off. But then you go over to those people, oh, no, we didn't set them off. You know, that wasn't us. And so, yeah, it becomes a, the police really.
Well, that's, yeah. The junk left behind is an issue. I mean, there are streets you drive down, and here are, like he says, all the spots where stuff was set off, and there's garbage all over the place. I hear, I hear complaints about that blankety-blank person who left the junk or, like Sharon's that's in the backyard, or, I had people setting stuff off in back of me, and I had bottle rockets flaming on top of my cylinder dock. You know, there's really stupid stuff that happens. But I don't see how the police would be able to police it. I mean, it's, you know, oh, gee, cheese it, here comes the police, you know? So everybody melts into the, melts into the woodwork, and it's that, no, it's that guy over there. And you're always pointing over at Ray. No, no.
Am I the only one here in Hasso?
Yeah. Well, Hasso's here all the time, you know? You're the public, Ray.
With everyone walking out, I felt I couldn't walk out.
Oh, good.
That Methodist get coming out in you.
So, I mean, the only thing I could see someday would end up happening is, you know, video cameras and security cameras are being very, you know, common now. And if somebody did sort of get somebody doing it illegal, if they, I mean, Captain, would you guys find somebody if they were caught doing illegal? I mean.
On video?
And maybe if it ends up being around somebody is ever caught, if it was a video, then people might be a little bit more leery about, you know, doing the illegal fireworks.
If it got press, so people know, oh, wait a minute, they're out there getting people, well.
Yeah. So is counsel wanting to report back of what we do, or just have this be a dead issue?
I'd say forget about it.
Not interested.
Okay. Okay. All right. Next is, all of you kind of received a copy of an email, and it was from Mr. Tally, and this was over railroad train whistle was wanting a quiet zone. So I remember sending him a response, and he did respond back, and he had contacted, I think it was ODOT Rail, and he'd also contacted, I think it was National Rail, and he wanted to still have us look into having quiet zones. And so then Ron Irish responded back to him very thoroughly, saying that, you know, yes, we could go down that path, but it's a very costly path. If you have to do quiet zones on all of, you know, your crossings, you could have anywhere from $300,000 to $500,000 per crossing.
Gated every crossing?
Yeah. It has to be a special new type of crossing made. So Mr. Tally had wrote back and still wanted us to look at pursuing it, and I did not respond. I said I would just bring it to the council, and if the council is wanting to look into having a study done, having, looking at the overall cost to it, what it would entail, it's up to you.
Well, do we want to cut so we can do this? Because that's what it would amount to. And if, being kind of hard-hearted about it, the guy moves in next to a railroad and then says, gee, the railroad sounds like a railroad. Well, I understand it's awful, but, you know.
Was he talking about Water Street or the main line?
No, this was one, North Albany's line.
Oh, North Albany.
Yeah. He moved in a few years ago into the neighborhood of, oh, what's it called? Hickory?
Behind North Point.
Of One Frona Day through there?
Yeah. I think it's more than just.
One each direction.
That rail, because at 2:00 in the morning, I can hear the whistles on the main line down past the switching yard. I mean, they'll start laying them on them, and after the message came through from Mr. Tally, the next time it happened, I kind of counted the number of whistles. And it's like, you know, they're going on for 15 or 20 minutes as they migrate through town, or as they back and forth, whatever they're doing. It's not just over on the line in North Albany or on Water Avenue. It's, you know, that sound permeating throughout the community from various locations. So, you know, the question, I can remember when Ralph was on council, Ralph addressed that issue of quiet zones, I think it was a verbal report. I don't remember the content of it all, but I think it'd be good to have the definition of, quiet zones are permitted under federal rules under these conditions, and this is the cost for local jurisdictions to do that. And I think Ron's email said there was something like 24 or 32 crossings that would only have to be signaledized in order to have a quiet city with all the quiet zones.
I remember the fourteen and a half million dollar number for all of them, and that many of them weren't, wouldn't even lend themselves.
I would take a short staff report saying, this is what a quiet zone is, this is the rules, if you want to look at it, here's the cost of doing it.
You know, for a long time, I considered myself the state's authority on this subject, which is a dangerous thing to say. But when I was in La Grande, La Grande, we had a, we had one guy in town, a Catholic priest, who, you know, was thoroughly convinced that these train whistles were really killing the town. And in fact, he went so far as to suggest that the reason people in La Grande were crabby was because they didn't get a good night's sleep. And, it sounds funny, but I spent several years looking at quiet zones and what the federal requirements were for them. And I think Ron did a nice job of summarizing. What you need, there, and there were some experiments that were tried that ultimately, you know, even, there was a thing that were called an automated train horn, or a directional train horn that was actually installed at certain crossings for a while to test it as an alternative to the horns on the train. So that as a train approached, a horn would blast. You know, a horn mounted to the crossing would blast, and it would be more directed rather than broadcast throughout the community. Those apparently failed, and they did not approve them for general use. So they created these standards that require interlocking gates so that people can't drive around the gates that are generally used at a gated crossing. As Ron pointed out, back when I was looking at it, those cost somewhere between $250,000 and $300,000, so it's not unreasonable to expect that they're up to $500,000 now. And those aren't the only things that have to be done. There are also some signage issues you have to do. And there are also included in that amount of money, there's, there's some, like, great improvements and things that have to be thrown in there as well. So it's, you know, it can be done, it's simply a matter of how much money you want to spend. And you don't have to do every crossing. But I have a good friend who lives in Salem, where they have installed quiet zones along.
Toll Street.
Pardon?
12th.
Yeah, right there by the Capitol and where the train station is in that area. And he said, yeah, it was great when they first did it, but he's noticed now, that he said, there are several days a week when, for whatever reason, they're continuing to blow the horn. So they're not, you don't get entirely quiet.
Well, and the wheels, the wheels on switches and that kind of stuff, I notice at my place, I hear the wheels on UP Main Line, I don't hear the whistles, but I hear the wheels. And it's click, 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 you know? And if you're relatively close, Helen, what, two miles away with an open window?
And the other problem is, we can't adopt an ordinance that we can enforce against the railroad. All we can do is ask the Federal Rail Administration to adopt a rule based on whatever expense we incur. And then we never have any certainty that the federal government won't change the rules and permit circumstances, still permit noise generating devices.
Well, I think that Ron's response in that email would certainly form the majority of a staff report. I think the response to that was initial discussions with ODOT Rail and Federal Highway, or Federal Rail, identifying some additional alternatives. So we would know, here's the subject, here's the issue, here's the alternative, here's the cost. And we, as council, would say, no, we're not interested in doing that, but it's memorialized because the issue will come back for the next council down the road. And rather than reinvent the wheel at that time, as we're now reinventing the wheel from when Ralph raised the issue, you know, with that, we can share that information with the general public, and they have that.
Yeah, I think it was in response to Ralph's comments, that, I think it was five years ago, maybe the time before, when I was campaigning, I asked the people along Water Street, are you bothered by the trains clacking through here at night? And no, most, I didn't hear any complaints. And some people said, oh, we like the sound of the train trundling through here. I've never gotten any complaints. And the other night, I didn't get to sleep till about 5:00 in the morning, finally took a marijuana pill, and then I was, I kind of drowsy all day, but I heard several trains come through and the whistles at night. And, but the worst part is the trains that have a bad wheel, you know, clack, clack, clack. I don't think we need to worry about noisy trains.
Maybe we just give them marijuana pills.
We'll ask Ron to maybe expand a little bit and come up with a method.
Okay. And I'll respond back to that, Mr. Tally, to just say that Ron's email will be sent off to the whole council, but not wanting to pursue it, so, at this time.
No, not just the email.
Not at $50 million.
Right. Okay, so that's it that I had. Wes, did you have anything?
No.
Okay, staff have anything?
We have a session.
Right. So, okay. With that, I'll recess to executive session to discuss litigation.